All right, welcome everyone to the January 20th, 2015 Shakopee City Council Meeting. Ms. Beckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lehman.
Here.
Councilmember Mokel.
Here.
Councilmember Luce.
Here.
Councilmember Whiting.
Here.
Mayor Tabke.
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, staff would like to remove 4D1 from the agenda.
All right. Anything from council? Entertainer motion to approve the agenda as amended. Ms. Mokel.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Item four, consent business. Anything to remove or add from consent?
Nothing from staff.
Anything from council? All right, seeing none, entertainer motion to approve the consent agenda noting that item number 4D1 is removed. Councilor Lehman?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the modification you mentioned.
All right, do I have a second? Second by Councilor Luce.
Is there anybody here in the audience for any item on the consent agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Is there anyone?
I don't know. I have no idea. Is there anybody here for an item on a consent agenda?
There we go then. Ms. Wilson, could you please read the consent business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 4B1 authorizes city staff to enter into an agreement to amend the current 2015 school resource officer agreement. 4B2 authorizes the purchase of a new specialty SWAT vehicle in the amount of $56,131 to be paid for from the 2015 Meadow Wonkaton Police Services contribution. 4C1 adopts resolution number 7542 committing the city to maintaining a trail and sidewalk on Verling Drive from County Road 69 to Taylor Street. 4C2 accepts, quote, the quote from Greystone Construction for the purchase of one new natural light fabric structure with installation for equipment storage in the amount of $97,954 to be paid for from the government buildings' internal service fund. 4C3 approves the purchase of a box, hoist, plow, and accessories from Cristal Truck Equipment Inc. in the amount of $24,503.79 and approves the purchase of a salt sand spreader from Aspen Equipment in the amount of $5,438, both to be paid for from the Capital Equipment Internal Service Fund. 4D1 was removed from the agenda. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $1,551,530.64. 4F2 approves the minutes of the December 16th, 2014, and January 6th, 2015 city council meetings. 4F3 adopts resolution number 7544 approving the transfer of the city's cable franchise with Comcast Cable and change of control of the grantee. And 4F4 approves the application and grants a temporary on-sale liquor license to the parish of St. Yocum and Anne, 350 Atwood Street South for February 7th, 2015.
All right, very well done. Thank you. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on to item number five, recognition of involved citizens by city council. These are time when anybody who would like to speak to council has five minutes to discuss items that are not on the agenda, and I know we have somebody in the audience who would like to speak. If you could come on up and sign in and then state your name and address for the record for us, and we'll try to keep Matt from biting too hard.
Unless, of course, you want that.
My name is Madeline Gwen. I will be moving to Shakopee in February, and I have a miniature potbelly pig as a pet. I know that there's zoning laws with them, and I would like to have you guys consider tweaking the zoning laws somehow into where he can live in a residential area with me and my house and my dogs and my husband, so...
The afterthought of the husband.
Yeah. So, yes, I just, he'll be about 40 pounds. He's neutered, he's vaccinated, and he won't be living outside, and I won't be collecting a small farm, so, yeah, I just want him to be able to move into Shakopee with me and my family.
Did you say he doesn't live outside?
He does not.
He does not, okay.
He lives inside, sleeps in my bed, owns the couch, is like a dog, but a little smarter than my dogs. So, yes, this is Oliver.
And this is a potbelly pig and not like a livestock pig kind of thing?
No, he's a miniature potbelly. So, he should, his father was 45 pounds and his mother is 30 pounds, so he should be, and he's the runt, so he should be anywhere under about 45 pounds, I would imagine, and he's about three pounds right now, so, just a tiny little guy.
You said three?
Three, 3.6 he weighs.
Wow.
Yeah, he's really small, so.
So currently our ordinance does not allow potbelly pigs as pets in the city of Shakopee?
Even in the home?
Even in the home, correct?
That's correct. It's actually in chapter 10, not chapter 11, the zoning ordinance where that's spelled out currently.
Councilor Whiting.
Mr. Leek, is there any background to this, or has this been in, on the books forever?
The ordinance we're talking about has been in its current form since at least the time that I got here, which, as you know, is a long time. It has not changed with respect to pigs. There have been some other changes recently with respect to chickens. I believe it was Mr. Sabota, one of our senior planners, who may have talked with Ms. Gwen, and so we've already done some initial research, and we could certainly follow up on that if that's the council's wish.
We're not going to take any action on the item tonight, as is normal with the recognition of involved citizens, but we'd like to know from council if anyone has a major problem with staff putting a little bit of time in this to get it changed. Does anybody have a major issue with this? Councilor Lehman?
I don't have enough information to tell you if I'm in favor or not. I guess I'm in favor of getting more information.
Okay, that's good enough, yeah.
And members of the council, we're happy to give you more information.
Okay. All right, we will look into it, and we've got your contact information.
Yes.
And we will be in touch with you from there and have it on a future council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. When do you move?
February.
Okay, perfect. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. All right, anyone else for item number five, recognition of involved citizens? All right, we're going to move on to item number six, A. Hilldale Drive Continued Public Hearing. I forget, do we need to open the public hearing again and then continue it?
No, Mr. Mayor, you don't need to open again. It's already, it's been, it's been open, it's been continued, so it's already opened.
Okay, very good. Councilor Lehman?
So, we're looking for a motion to approve, or to continue the public hearing?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion to continue the public hearing on Hilldale Drive Improvement Project till February 17th, 2015.
Councilor Lehman, do you have a second? Councilor Mokel?
I'll second.
Um, yeah. Is there anybody in the audience who's here to speak on this item tonight, since it is a public hearing and it's still an open public hearing for Hilldale Drive? All right, seeing none, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We move on to item number eight, entertainer motion recess for economic development authority meeting. Councilor Mokel?
I'll make a motion to recess for the economic development authority meeting.
Second by Councilor Luce, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. President Lehman, you're on.
All right. Mr. Mayor, we do need to elect new officers for the EDA, but we're planning to do that in February.
Perfect, sorry.
So, the secretary will please note the role. Motion to approve the agenda would be in order.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Tabke, seconded by Mr. Whiting. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Consent agenda minutes in bill list. Mr. Whiting?
Make a motion to approve the consent business as presented.
Do I have a second? Mr. Luce, motion by Whiting, seconded by Luce. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Ms. Mokel?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, February 17th, 2015 at 7:00 PM.
Motion by Mokel, seconded by Luce. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Another record.
Well done. All right, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council Meeting and move on to item number 10A1, zoning text amendment to add senior housing facilities as a conditional use in the R1C Old Shakopee Residential Zone, ordinance number 899. Mr. Leek?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just a brief recap, and I know you know this information. The CDA brought a concept for a senior housing facility on the site of the former St. Mary's School, and it was reviewed by both Planning Commission, the city council. After your review of the concept plan, you directed staff to prepare a text amendment for a public hearing. We did do that, and the public hearing was held at the Planning Commission on January 8th. I do want to caution you, in case anyone has this question in their mind, it is a zoning text amendment. It doesn't apply only and specifically to the site. That was the subject of the concept plan. So the required notice was the posted published hearing notice. We did not send individual notices. That said, there were no members of the public at the public hearing on the text amendment, and so the public hearing was closed. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the text amended amendment as it was presented by senior planner Kyle Sabota that night, and I want to just highlight the criteria that staff developed as a part of the text amendment. And note for you that these are the recommended criteria. Of course, as you know, the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, which rules on conditional use permits, depending on the facts of each individual CUP case, can impose other conditions. But what we prepared was that there be a minimum lot size of .75 acres for this type of project, a maximum density of 45 units per acre, and you'll have seen in the report the reason why we pegged that density based on some existing senior housing projects in the community. Maximum height equal to the maximum height set forth by the design standards in the R1C. That is 35 feet, but in each of our zoning districts, it is allowable to ask for a CUP for an overheight structure. So that's not to say that senior housing would only be 35 feet. They can request a CUP for higher. And of course, the project you've seen is higher than that over part of the structure. Minimum structure setbacks equivalent to the R1C regulations, except we've suggested half the maximum building height on the side yard setback, impervious surface percentage of 70%, and building and design materials meeting section 1160 of the zoning code regarding design materials. So that's what we're proposing before you this evening. As I said, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the text amendment. Representatives of the team from the CDA here, if you are here, if you have any questions about how it applies to their project, should you approve this text amendment, it will take effect once it's published in the city's legal newspaper, and they will presumably make application for the CUP and any variances that they may need for the project that you saw. That would be subject to a public hearing as well, and in that case, we would send notices to individual property owners within 350 feet of the property. So that would be the next step if you approve this this evening. So with that, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. Leek. Councilor Whiting?
On the height requirement for the R1C zone, what's the background on that? It's a 35-foot height. And could you talk a little bit how the Planning Commission arrived at one-half of the maximum height of the building?
Well, clarification, it wasn't the Planning Commission that arrived at that. Your direction was for staff to develop text. We did some research, and it was our suggestion that it be one-half the building height. And the reason for that is that when we see structures higher than what's permitted in a zoning district, we're concerned about potential shadow patterns on adjoining property, and that kind of setback helps to offset or mitigate those kinds of concerns. I can't really speak to why the height in the R1C zone is 35 feet, because that zone was developed before even I got here, and it's been in place for a long time. I suspect it was based on the types of heights of existing houses in the Old Shakopee residential area.
Thank you.
Councilor Lehman?
Mr. Leek, my concern is the height, and it looks like the workaround is a conditional use permit, which this body doesn't see, oversee, so...
That's correct. You only see it if there's an appeal of the decision by the...
So in order for us to get it here, we would have to appeal it?
I'll let the attorney speak to who can appeal it. I will tell you generally, under Shakopee's code, anyone has standing to appeal a decision of the board.
Mr. Mayor, yes, city staff could appeal a decision to the...
Could council appeal it?
No, someone, you could probably direct staff to appeal, but technically it has to come from...
Okay. Well, my concern is it's, the conditional use permit process is a workaround to the elected body. So it's a simple way of taking the ownership, if you will, of the issue off of the political body, if you will. And that concerns me because I'm not in favor of a 55-foot structure. And to adopt this and have the conditional use permit process decide that height, you know, it's pretty easy politically to just sit back and say, hey, you know, I approved 35-foot, and this zoning text change, the CUP process got it to 55, I had no part of that, so my fingers are out of it.
I guess, Councilor Lehman, members of the council, the only thing that I can say to that is that that presumes what will happen at the Board of Adjustments. I certainly am not in a position to do that. I think you know that both you and the Planning Commission expressed some concern about the height of the project that you saw, so I'm assuming that will be a concern at the public hearing as well. But you are right, the CUP, unless it's appealed, only goes to the board because in granting a CUP or in granting a variance, they're acting as a quasi-judicial board. So they are making a final decision for the city pending an appeal, if there is one.
Councilor Whiting?
And I suspect that, you know, this is the takeback, the one-half the maximum building size, so if you do end up with a 55-foot building, you're shrinking that developer's space to where it's not feasible anymore to develop that property. So I can see how it's kind of a give and take here.
I would just, Mayor, I would just caution that that's not the intent of the side yard setback, the intent of the side yard setback, although it may work that way economically by itself for the developer, but the intent of the side yard setback, with my understanding, was to shadowing the height.
Well, I agree, that's what he said, but I think...
Yeah, I hear you. I just want to make clear that wasn't the reason for that being included in the text amendment, not by my understanding of what staff's explanation was.
All right, any other questions? Councilor Luce?
I don't have a big problem with this. My question goes to parking. We do have a church right next door. We're going to have, I understand the residents are going to have parking underground, but they're going to have visitors, they're going to have staff. On Sundays, it gets pretty, pretty heavy up there. Just wondering if anybody's addressed that and...
Councilor Luce, members of the council, I think both you and the Planning Commission addressed that concern as you reviewed the concept, and you can certainly ask the representatives of the CDA how they're attempting to address that. They, of course, had a graphic that showed some on-street parking, and at the Planning Commission's review of the concept, a member of the church got up and indicated that they might be looking at trying to create parking between the rectory and the church. I'm not sure how far that's gone, but I know on review of the conditional use permit, that's one of the items that they will have to address because it's been expressed to them at both bodies, both the city council and the Planning Commission. And the concern, of course, is that there are, I believe, 347 families in this congregation, so they have a lot of parking for their services. And one of the questions was, is parking at Central Elementary going to be an option for them during services? I don't think anyone's talked with the school district about that. And of course, the city may be involved in some discussions about how that building gets used. So if you want, you may want to ask the members of the CDA's team how they're addressing that, but I know that was a concern expressed from both the Planning Commission and the city council.
Councilor Luce?
If they use parking between the church and rectory, aren't they falling into hard surface problems then?
Possibly and possibly not. It depends on what they actually do, and we don't have any details on what they would actually do. One of the things that you have to assume here is with the prospective purchase by the CDA of the property, for the senior housing project, there will be a plat of that land into a site for senior housing, and then they will have to address impervious surface, the church will separately. And a change to their site will probably trigger a CUP for them as well. I don't believe that that church, as with many older churches in Shakopee, had a CUP. So what happens is when there's a change in their site plan or an expansion in their facilities, they then go through the CUP process to become conforming rather than legal non-conforming uses.
And just to be clear, this text amendment doesn't have anything to do with parking, correct?
This text amendment has nothing to do with the specific proposal.
Right.
As I said, they'll have to come forward with applications, and there will be a public hearing or public hearings on those applications.
All right. Councilor Luce, did you have something else?
Yeah, just so everyone's clear, I'm not against senior housing. I just, you know, want to get a few questions answered.
And could you give us real quick, just so everybody knows, the process, since this is a text amendment to the zoning, what the process for the Henderson is moving forward, when it comes back?
Sure. So as I said, if you approve the text amendment, we'll publish it in the city's legal newspaper. That text will become effective. They then can make application for a CUP, and I believe there's at least one, if not more, variances for the site plan that they were looking at. They'll make that application. We will schedule a public hearing before the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. On that application, as I said, we will send public hearing notices to property owners within 350 feet of the project property, and the board, at the end of the day, will make a decision about how to approve that and under what conditions. The general assumption, I think, with CUPs is at some point the use will be approved. It's a question of under what conditions that make it work with the surrounding area.
Councilor Luce?
Just one quick question. I had someone in the city ask me, where'd they come up with the name?
I'm going to guess, and they can set me straight if I'm wrong, that it's probably in honor of Marge Henderson, who was the longtime CDA chair, but...
It's got the affirmative nod, yes.
All right.
That's what was speculated, so I just wanted to clear it up.
All right, any other questions for council? Councilor Whiting?
No other questions, just a comment. We know that in the next 20 years, more people are going to be retiring than ever before. Senior housing is going to be a major issue for every community, and I think Shakopee has more of a shortage than we need. And we're going to be running into this more often, where developers are going to want to come in with some sort of senior housing project. So with that, I'll offer a...
Can we hold on just a second? I just wanted to ask, is there anybody in the audience that wanted to talk about this? I know there's been a lot of discussion in the community about... And this is not specifically, just so you know, not specifically with regard to this project, but with the text amendment in general, if you could please?
I'm Carol Schuffler. I live on 626 Lewis, so I'm outside of your 300 feet, but I'm certainly affected right now by the parking. Central uses parking all the way down. This is on a regular day, and church services happen on Sundays, but funerals happen whenever they need them. So there's already a parking issue, so my concern is, have you really looked at what the existing parking is, the patterns, and then you layer this on top of it? Is there enough parking? And then there was the snow issue. Are you really looking at, is there enough parking for the way you've got it planned?
This doesn't address the parking at all?
Right, I know that.
This is simply text amendment.
And I'll come back later.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll come back later.
We will, yeah, we will, so as Mr. Leek indicated, this will be going back through our Planning Commission. So at that time for this project specifically, will be the time to talk about the parking and that neighborhood and how everything is affected, but your comments are duly noted.
Once you make this decision to do this, this variance in our neighborhood, and down the line, the school district decides to sell Central, is that the way it's going to go? You're kind of, can you put more in this area? Can you, does this set a precedent, or does they have to go through the same process every time they want to do something like this?
Mr. Leek, thank you. The answer to that is if this text amendment is approved, every project would have to go through that same public hearing process for a conditional use permit. So it doesn't per se set a precedent. It makes it possible for other projects to happen in the Old Shakopee Zone, residential zone, R1C, but they'd have to make application for a conditional use permit, hold a public hearing, and the Board of Adjustments would have to determine what conditions it would be approved under.
Okay, and then at what point do we get to have public comment on the parking or an answer to some of your concerns, or any adjustments made to staff, visitors, funerals, school, all happening at the same time?
When it comes to the Planning Commission, is the time where that will happen. I don't think we have a date for that yet. It all depends on when application is made. Is that correct? We don't have a date yet?
Correct.
So it will, it will be published in the Shakopee Valley News when it is, and I'm sure that if we've got your contact information, we can get in touch with you.
We can read it.
Okay.
In fact, if you want to receive an individual notice while we send it within 350 feet, if we have a request, we'll add that to the list and send out a notice.
Councilor Lehman?
Mayor, we've got a couple of senior housing units in residential already, and a couple that come to mind would be Trident Development up by the Catholic School. And the other one is Emerald Crest down on 6th by the West End Mall, across the street where the old farm used to be. where the old farm used to be. A little bit different, they're more of a single type. I'm not really sure what the difference is between them uses and what these folks are proposing, but, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with having them in residential. I just want them to be able to fit into the neighborhood. And that's where I gather my concern with the conditional use process and taking it away from the council, but I'm not against the conditional use process either, so.
If I recall correctly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Leek, but the, our other residential districts allow for senior housing in them, and so that's why it wasn't a problem for Trident. And this one, I'm assuming it's the first time that this has been coming through.
Old Shakopee.
Correct. Right, so it's a different zoning class that needs to have that amendment made for it. Does that make sense?
Yep, but realistically, those two are located in residential neighborhoods too.
Yep, so that should have, give us no problem with this one, for the most part.
Right.
Yeah. Yes, sir?
I signed in. I'm Kevin Gillick, 136 Sixth Avenue East. And I think between Mr. Leek, your presentation, and the board's Q and A, and Carol's comments, I think it's all been asked, except for one thing, because I'm just kind of curious. When the text amendment that you have in front of you calls out a minimum lot size or maximum number of units, I'm trying to understand why the parking isn't in there. I recognize it's not in there, but if you have a minimum, maximum number of units, like 45, wouldn't it be reasonable to think that if you have 45 units, there might be 45 cars? Or that there's a relationship between the structure and the automobiles of the people who service the structure? So I guess I'm wondering, is it unusual to have parking in these text amendments? Or does it happen on occasion, and it just isn't in this occasion that that one item is kind of being separate? I'm just kind of wondering if procedurally, if that's typically not in a text amendment.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Gillick, the answer is that the standard for parking is already in the zoning code, so for senior housing, there's one off-street parking space required for each unit. There are also requirements for the staff parking. The issue, I think, in this case is really going to boil down to, how does that relate to the parking that's left available for the church with this project? I think that's where the real concern lies. But the answer to your question is, it is not typically in this kind of text amendment because the use already exists in the city and the standard for parking is already in the code.
So just to be clear, the parking for this development, they need to have one parking stall for every unit that's in there, so they're going to have underground parking? So in theory, and mostly in reality, as the way it goes forward, the parking, on-street parking will be for visitors and other people such as that. I think they're also going to have a little bit of visitor parking as well.
They did, in the site plan you saw, have some off-street visitor parking as well and transfer parking.
So there is parking that is definitely addressed in this, but the biggest concern that I think that we at council have is the parking for the church. Since this is what the church uses for parking, how does that affect the whole thing?
Okay.
Councilor Whiting?
Mayor, I would guess one of the, oops.
Use it first, sorry.
And I think Mr. Leek touched on the fact that the church would be going through another conditional use permit process by changing their use of that property. So correct me if I'm wrong, but they might have to clarify their parking issues too.
Yes, members of the council, Mr. Gillick, and I can address that briefly. You may remember, if you watched the tape or read the minutes, I think it's in the minutes, that it was indicated by one of the church council members that they were looking at up to 55 spaces on the land in between the rectory and the church. I have no idea whether or not that can fit there, but if they're proposing to do parking on the site where they don't currently have parking, that would change their site plan, the use of that property, so it would trigger a conditional use permit. There would be a public hearing on their conditional use permit, and again, the questions about whether or not their parking is adequate would be raised through that as well.
Councilor Lehman?
I was just going to add that the conditional use permit process and the conditions arrived during that process are supposed to address the neighborhood concerns, mitigate the neighborhood concerns. So if the concern is, you know, let's say overnight parking on the street or something, that's easily addressed in the conditions of a conditional use permit that say no over the street, no on-street overnight parking is allowed because it's an odd-even snow parking area or whatever the case might be, so no noise after certain hours and blah blah blah. All that's addressed in the conditional use permit under conditions of that permit to be met, and they don't meet them conditions, well then there's recourse that they could use or lose their conditional use permit.
Is that...
We're just going to say thank you for a very clear explanation.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yep. All right, Councilor Whiting, oh, Councilor Lewis.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out to people, you know, and don't take me wrong on this, a lot of people are going to be against this project. They also have the ability to change this project into low-income housing, which a lot of people fight a lot harder against, so just want to point it out that, you know, you'd probably be better off with seniors than low-income.
All right, Councilor Whiting?
Low-income people need places to live.
If I'll up on that?
Yeah?
Yeah, I didn't want to suggest in any way that I'm opposed to the project. I understand that there'll be future council meetings, I believe, where the project itself will be talked about, but that wasn't the purpose of today, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Whiting?
If you're ready, I'll offer motion to approve ordinance number 899 and the addition of senior housing facilities with requirements to the city code section 11.30, R1C, Old Shakopee Residential Zone, subdivision three, conditional uses, and move its adoption.
Do we have a second? Second, Councilor Lewis, correct? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you very much. Now entertain a five-minute recess. We're going to go into workshop discussion about annexation and future land use planning. Councilor Lehman?
Motion for a five-minute recess.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Councilor Lewis, any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are in recess. We will pull the meeting back into order. All right, we reconvene the Shakopee City Council meeting and move on to item number 11A. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. You'll recall at your meeting two weeks ago, we talked about priority issues for the council in the coming months, and one of those three priority issues was westward growth, possible annexation, and some land use planning for the city. Therefore, I ask Community Development Director Michael Leek to walk you through a conversation tonight that addresses those various subjects. Annexation, both what we have as an existing annexation agreement as well as what state law provides for. In terms of land use planning, we're going to take a look at the available undeveloped land in the community currently, and then we'll talk about how we might prepare for development of this land on the west side at the other end. We did not invite Jackson Township, Scott County landowners specifically this evening. I believe many are aware that we're having the conversation, but the purpose tonight was just to have a foundational conversation, make sure that all of the council, as well as staff, are starting out on the same page and have the same basic knowledge and understanding going into the process. As we move down this path, this is going to be a multiple-night, multiple-meeting discussion and project, and working with Jackson Township officials, Jackson Township residents and property owners, Scott County and others, is certainly going to be part of that process. So the map I have up in front of you is to give you a starting point of what we're area that we're specifically talking about. Michael is going to go back and start from a bigger picture and talk annexation in general, and then we're going to bring it back down to this parcel by the end of the presentation. So parcel that you see here on the map, this red line is the current city boundary. So this land here is the MinDOT land that you agreed to purchase at your last city council meeting, and this land here is all currently within the city of Shakopee. This parcel right here, parcels right here, are outside of the city of Shakopee. When we get to talking about some master planning tasks, it's staff's recommendation that we consider the entire area within the blue. So a majority of that, a little over half, is already in the city of Shakopee, but a portion is outside of the city limits, and that would be this section right here. It's our recommendation that we go up and look at the land surrounding this intersection as well that's undeveloped, as well as this parcel that we are acquiring be included in the conversation. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Michael, who knows a heck of a lot more about annexation than I do.
Having said that, I'm going to try not to bore you. I have four slides. I want you to have a chance to discuss what we're talking about this evening. So to put it really simply, there are basically two processes under state statute by which the city can annex land. One is known as annexation by ordinance. Your report contains the specific site to that language. Basically, the four conditions under which you can undertake annexation by ordinance are set forth here. That is, the land is owned by the city, it's completely surrounded by the city, it abuts the city and is less than 120 acres, or it had a plat approved after August 1st of 1995 for lots that were 21,780 square feet or less. The other process is known as orderly annexation, and what that means is that there is an agreement formed by the city or cities and township or townships that talks about how annexation is going to take place, and I'll talk about the distinctions in a little bit. That is not to say that a city cannot exercise annexation by ordinance. It still could do that, and in the annexation agreement that you have as part of your packet, you'll have seen there is a provision that deals with it, and there are some implications in terms of the length of process the city has to go through and the offset for taxes that are lost in the existing annexation agreement. In my experience at least, there are really two basic approaches. One is that annexation is petition-driven. In other words, the property owner or property owner and a developer are interested in land being annexed in order to get the greatest value and have the property served by municipal services. And in fact, that's the basic nature of the orderly annexation agreement that you have with Jackson Township. A couple of side notes, you do not have an orderly annexation agreement with Louisville Township, and in fact, we've never had discussions about that. Some of you will recall that Louisville has flirted with the notion of becoming a city in the past, but they certainly have not been interested in annexation. You also know that we've had a number of property owners involving Jackson Township board members over the last couple of years. Chris mentioned that they're aware of this discussion. In fact, last week, I had a conversation with Tim Keen, who represents the township, and apprised him specifically of what we're talking about tonight. So I'm going to guess he talked to the township board about what we're discussing this evening. The other approach, and here in Scott County, it's sort of evidenced by an agreement Prior Lake has with Spring Lake Township, is a staged approach to annexation. That means that it identifies specific areas to be annexed and a timeline for their annexation, which also assumes the planning for getting sewer, water, storm drainage, and roadways to that area. Now, I would note for you that those timelines in that Spring Lake Township agreement have not been met, or at least for the most part, have not been met. So it's not necessary that you've guessed right all the time. What is necessary is that you jointly plan with the township for which areas would be subject to annexation, under what timeline, and how you would get the infrastructure there. And you will have sensed that there is a bias in staff's recommendation. There are four asterisks there. I think staged annexation makes the timeline potentially more predictable for everyone, and by that I mean the city, the township, and the property owners within the township. Some of you will recall at the last meeting we had with property owners, the questions were largely, when are you going to get sewer and water and roads to my property so I can sell it? Staged annexation helps with that. If it's better known when it may happen, that may have an impact on the marketability of land and indeed the potential return. So if a property is in an area addressed by an orderly annexation agreement that says within three years, this area is going to be within the city of Shakopee, that will certainly have an impact on what the market is for that land. It also provides for better infrastructure planning, and I've noted that... And I've noted that the region treats these approaches petition-driven and staged differently, which is something that the city of Shakopee will be butting up against. Right now, in the assumptions for growth adjacent to the city of Shakopee, the Met Council treats Jackson Township as essentially permanently rural. It doesn't do that for Spring Lake Township. It assumes that it will urbanize because it has a plan for when that will occur. So, enough on that. For this meeting, we also wanted to prepare a map that was updated that showed you potential properties that exist for commercial, industrial, and residential development. That was a part of your packet and probably a little easier to read. You'll of course, see the area that was annexed in the mid-2000s on the west side. You'll see an area on the west side of 83, south of Valley View Road, basically. And Bruce knows much more about it, but sanitary sewer was extended on the east side of 83 to serve those areas. You've got the mine area and the Howar properties and two commercial properties right on County Road 16, 17, again on the west side of 83. And on the east side, you see some properties that are available going up toward the boundary with Prior Lake. Some of those properties, you've seen two properties develop, Dakota Highlands and Dakota Crossings. As we get further to the south, closer to the city of Prior Lake, there are some substantial service issues in terms of extension of water and sewer. So, those are things that we've been wrestling with, I think, here at the city for quite a number of years. On the industrial side, of course, you see the properties at Shenandoah between 101 and Fourth Avenue that are available. But what you can see from this map is what you already know. You've had a lot of success with industrial and business park properties, and so what you have available is reduced from it was just a couple of years ago. So, we want you to discuss those issues, and we actually as staff have a number of recommendations for you. First, we think it's well past time to have formal discussions with Jackson Township about updating or creating a new orderly annexation agreement. And by way of background, for those who don't know, we started negotiating the existing agreement in 1999. It was approved and executed in 2002. So, it's 12 years old, and certainly circumstances have changed. One of them, and this is not meant in a negative light, is that development is being pushed to the west because of land ownership within the city. So, areas that you might have expected to develop under the city's control are not going to do so. So, we'd ask that you direct, that we tell Jackson Township, we really want to have a set series of meetings aimed at developing a staged approach to annexation. We did include in your packet some information that was put together for the township. Aylers prepared it under the direction of the township in Scott County using CDA TAP money. They had a question about what is the tipping point for Jackson Township financially as Shakopee were to annex property in? Long and short of that study, and you have it in front of you, or that report and analysis, is there really doesn't seem to be a financial tipping point. There may be other tipping points related to the configuration of the township, depending on what areas are annexed. But the map that Chris showed you, we think is a logical area to look at, since it's immediately adjacent to areas that are already within the city. We also are asking that you direct us to go ahead and prepare an issue, a request for proposals for the development of a master land use plan concept, plan for the area that Chris showed you, both within the city and in the township. And the reason that we're doing that is, my perspective, others can add to it if they wish. That land has been annexed since 2006. Even with the recovery, we are not seeing a lot of activity on that land. Now, we as staff have been talking to a variety of developers, telling them it's a good thing for them to talk to the property owners, to see if they're interested in the sale of their land. But we think it would be beneficial to understand what the market really is for land uses there. What we have guided and zoned right now was set forth when D.R. Horton was looking at a large project for all of the acreage that was annexed. And of course, we know they only closed on two parcels with land totaling roughly 70 acres. Part of the reason for going out for a request for a proposal, certainly staff, both engineering and planning and others as needed, financial staff, would be involved in the study. But what consultants bring to the table, in my view, is that they work not only with cities, but with developers on specific projects. So, they have a real insight into what's happening right now with projects that they may be working on, and thus the market. And in addition, if we're starting to look at how to expand our public infrastructure into those areas, they have some engineering expertise that they can devote to that, that your engineering staff certainly would be capable of doing, but they have a lot of other things that they're doing for the city at this point. We also are recommending that if you go ahead and tell us, we should issue a request for proposal for that land use study, that you direct us to come back with an interim ordinance for moratorium on development in those areas shown on the map, that you can act on on February 3rd. What we don't want to have is a study which, when it's done, has seen properties get taken down for uses that you may not think are ideal for that area of the city. So, it's beneficial, we think, to put a moratorium on that large but limited area of the city and the township. I don't know that we have jurisdiction over the township. Mr. Thompson can address that, but certainly the city. So, those are our recommendations. And now, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but what we really want is your discussion about whether or not you agree that we should move ahead with those three things.
All right. As we get into this discussion, just so that I don't get yelled at by folks at home, everybody needs to talk into the microphone. All right? Because if we don't talk into the microphone, I'm going to have Chris put electrodes in the backs of the chairs, so that everybody has to, because I got yelled at by multiple people for not being able to understand us at the workshop, so.
I want the electrodes, so go ahead.
There's a concept, invisible fence for council members.
There we go, on so many levels.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So, now we can start discussion. Councilor Moke, head her hand up first.
Of the people that have been looking at developing here, is there reasons why they do or are not taking those plats, or are they giving you any feedback to that area?
Well, the developer that acquired what was Larry Tice's farmstead, about 70 acres, plus or minus, when they had talked with the city last year, were asking for a couple of things that are very unusual, especially for residential development. And that was potential city assistance and for the city to assess costs of the roadways that would be required for their development. The general response to that was probably not as positive as they might have liked. And there's the additional difficulty, I know for them, of the area which is right here on the west side of 15 and immediately adjacent to 169, being guided and zoned for commercial. And some of the initial thoughts was that there would be a roadway that lined up with this ramp, continue then down to the bluff, to facilitate development on the lower portion down below the bluff. On the property that they own, that essentially leaves no land for commercial development, it would really only provide for that roadway. So, I know they were looking for other alternatives, and they were also looking at what the market was and how they might adjust what they originally looked at. They had a concept plan, some of you may have seen it, that showed some medium-density housing here. When we last talked with them, they were talking about, here's a surprise, senior housing as a possibility on this site, single family. And one of the things that's very much different than it was when they originally proposed their concept is that much of the development was being driven by the desire of the school district to build an elementary school right here on 78. And that would have required then that the utilities be pulled to that area through the rest of the development area. And I know that some of those future expenses are in Shakopee Public Utilities Planning. The things that would be required are pumps, a water interceptor, and additional storage to serve the high elevations, which cover much of the site to the south.
Am I remembering correctly that that school that was intended to be there got built as Jackson instead, or was that a separate school? I think it got moved, didn't it?
I believe you're right, that it got built as Jackson.
Because that was originally supposed to be housing where Jackson is.
Right.
Okay. Councilor Whiting?
Yes, thank you. In regards to the Met Council's 2040 Thrive Plan, and we have our orderly annexation agreement currently, and we're proposing to change it to the planned staged kind of annexation approach. What benefit does that give us, and do we have time to take advantage of that benefit with the comp plan as it is?
Councilor Whiting, members of the council, I think there is still a window to potentially affect the system statements, which are issued by the Met Council to every city and county that guide what their comprehensive plan is going to say relative to metropolitan systems, including land use. But that window is growing smaller as we speak. My recollection is that the Met Council has talked about issuing those system statements late in 2015 or early in 2016. And for the audience that's watching in the seven-county metro area, we have a statute that requires in that seven-county area that every 10 years, we do comprehensive plans. And the Metropolitan Council, of course, coordinates that. And as you correctly noted, they have a regional plan. It's called Thrive MSP 2040, which has a lot of implications for what we do. If we're unable to affect the system statement for Shakopee, then the amount of land that's available for development and the ways in which we can argue about whether or not their projections for employment households and population may not be as optimistic as they should be, become less.
Thank you.
Nothing else? Councilor Levin?
Couple of comments. If we can get back to your slide with your four points of what it is you're looking for.
Sure.
Number one, total favor for that. Request for proposal, develop master land use council plan, in favor of that. The timeline, not, we talked, you talked about Prior Lake and it's Spring Lake not meeting its timeline. A lot of the timelines are really driven by the market.
Absolutely.
You know, right after the housing crash in '08 or whatever it was, '09 wasn't a very good year to build. It just wasn't there.
Absolutely agree.
So, that plays into it. But I think, to me, in your packet, you'll see the agreement from 2002 by then Mayor Bill Maher. I was part of that council, and I was working with the township at that time and another council member. The issues that go along with developing this land are many and very, very complex, from joint electrical services out there, XLN, Shakopee Public Utilities, kind of hodgepodge in different areas, the high water elevation, sewer extension. It's just pretty complex. So, I'm totally supportive of getting, you know, a firm to come in and help look at that, along with staff's expertise in some of these utility areas. The moratorium part, I'm a little bit confused on that. We can put a moratorium on our parcels that we have jurisdiction over, but we don't have the authority to put a moratorium over township property that we don't have jurisdiction over, which is something that me and Brad need to be talking to the township about when we have some of these discussions, because obviously, we don't want them to build a bunch of stuff out there that's, you know, their services are going to be mountain systems and so on and so forth, with the 30-year life expectancy and stuff. And where they place roads might not be beneficial to the overall use of the land and these types of things. So, definitely going to have to have some conversations there. I just want to point out that the moratorium part is for lands that are currently in the city of Shakopee, or as we annex them. And I'm not necessarily opposed to that, because once we have somebody, if that's what council wants to do, to take a look at what the best land uses are, some of the existing uses might not be the best and highest uses. I don't know that, but we're speculating. And then I guess the last thing I would say is, at some point in this process, we either individually or as a group, need to figure out what we see this land being, you know? And I don't know where that fits into your process, if that's with a consulting firm that sits down.
I think that's certainly a part of the process of doing that land use or master planning exercise, and indeed, since we're proposing to include township lands, we'd want the township board to have input into that as well. It certainly doesn't do us any good to do a study that doesn't have your input as well.
Well, and I think, once the land uses are identified, then you can get an accurate idea on the services, because the services are going to be contingent on what the end use is.
Right.
You know? So, Mr. Leek, at one point, years back, actually, it was probably '02, there was discussion about excess capacity in the, I can't get it right, Shakopee Chaska Interceptor?
That's how I think it's appropriately termed, even in the documents. My understanding, and I know Bruce Looney has had conversations with MCES staff, is that there is currently sufficient capacity in that interceptor to serve this general area. Years ago, when we were having very rapid development, there was some concern because of the extent and rate at which Chaska and Carver were using the capacity in that interceptor. But I think you got an indication that there's capacity there today.
No, I mean, that was a few years ago, that they basically said they would always make sure we had capacity. So, they'll keep monitoring it, whether we have capacity. I'm sure we have capacity today, because development's really slowed down.
And Matt, you specifically may remember that at one point, we had MCES staff here saying, "If we don't have capacity in the existing interceptor, we have an obligation to provide that capacity." So, I think as we move forward with this study, it probably would be worthwhile to let MCES staff know of what we're doing, and perhaps even get their input into the capacity that they see currently to serve these areas. Because as Bruce said, it's been a couple of years since we really talked about that.
I would have to dust off a VCR and get some tapes out, but I could have swore we actually bought some extra capacity in the early 2000s in that interceptor.
I don't recall that we actually bought the capacity at that time, do you, Bruce?
We bought some excess capacity.
We have bought capacity for the land that's in Shakopee.
Okay.
When we annex land, we'll have to buy more capacity. But that's what the city SAC charges for.
Yep.
And along with that, we, last year through Scales TED, Transportation Economic Development, we had a meeting with Met Council Environmental Services to talk specifically about sewer capacity for economic development along 169. And there is absolutely capacity there for what we would need in the mid-range future, as well as they're still targeting additional treatment facilities down somewhere between Shakopee and Jordan on 169 corridor, somewhere down there, smaller facility to augment that area.
And I might add to the recollection that I have is, when Scott County and MCES did that joint study for that facility the mayor just talked about, initially, they were looking at a 20, 30-year timeframe. And when they came to the end of the study, given the capacity usage, they were talking about that facility not really being needed to perhaps as late as 2050. So, it's quite a ways out there, and the assumption is that they'll have sufficient capacity in the existing system and at Blue Lake to serve the areas that would develop.
Councilor Whiting?
Just to address a couple of things on the public utility side, as far as... Just to address a couple of things on the public utility side, as far as the mishmash you talked about with MVAC and XL and Shakopee Public Utilities, once the property is annexed, Shakopee Public Utilities has the ability to go into that area and take over that area. And I think it's a staged approach to that, that portion of it.
There's a cost to do that, though.
There's a cost, and they will, along with the township board, they will need to be brought into this discussion quite early. We talked a little bit about the tank by the, the school property and that higher elevation, and that's definitely going to be key into developing any of this area. And that is going to require, you know, several years, I would expect, to get it planned, built, and ready to go. So having the staged approach gives them a timeline to understand where they're going to need to put utilities to, so. Now, one other question I have, if I may continue, is with your discussions with the township, would a moratorium on the township side be requested, do you think, by, by us? Are you bringing that to them and asking them to do the same thing?
You know, to me, and this is just my personal feeling, we'd have to ask the council what they think before we can represent that, but, boy, any kind of large development, obviously, I don't think is a good idea during this process. You know, if they want to put a parking lot in here and there, things that can change are no big deal, but, you know, if they're going to put in something big, I don't know that they can do that through the, you know, through the county, through this process or not, but I certainly wouldn't, wouldn't think that would be a good idea during this process, because that's something that, if they put, let's say they put in a, a big warehouse type function or whatever, a widget factory with a big mound system to support it for thirty years, well, that's a pretty big investment to be making. If there's some kind of future arrangement where we're going to annex this and develop it over time, well, it's a workaround. I mean, I'm not saying they can't do that, but we would have to design, you know, our facilities and our infrastructure and utilities and stuff to the point to where, when our system at some future date breaks down, they're going to be able to hook into the system. So, you know, it's hard to tell them what to do, but it just doesn't, it hasn't happened in the future, in the past, in this, this area. I just don't, I don't see it going that way, but you never know. So I, I wouldn't be, you know, I would ask them to consider not having big developments in that area, but it's ultimately their decision.
Members of the council, I might add, because I didn't in my presentation, that I made some initial context to try and get a sense of both the cost and timeline for this kind of study. And it appears that we're looking at three to six months, depending on how ambitious the study is in getting into the infrastructure questions. So I tend to agree with you, asking the question of the township board makes sense, because there's an end date for the study, potentially for the moratorium. And you're absolutely right, there is some difficulty in having them, for example, decide that they want to have significant industrial development on the down bluff side. That really has an impact on scale job objectives, for example, given the kinds of uses that would be supportable by ISTS systems. So I think it's worth asking the question. You certainly can't control what their answer is, and they wouldn't be obligated to put a moratorium on. The other thing that's kind of nice about the study done with the CDA TAP grant is the lands that they identified, which include the area adjacent to what's in the city now, are basically taxed at agricultural rates, and, let's see, go back to the document camera. So we're talking about much less than what they identified in that study, and as I said, the study basically indicates, and I'm simplifying, so I apologize to the township if it's an oversimplification, you could annex areas A through E, and financially, the township would still be viable. So I'm not sure that there's great pressure to develop under township zoning standards under Scott County's land use and zoning, which is basically either a, a holding district or a commercial holding district in this general area. Bottom line, I think you asked the question, and whatever the answer is, is theirs to get.
Chris?
Just to add to what Michael was talking about, if you read through the report from Ellers regarding the financial impacts of potential annexation on the township, the area that we as staff are specifically proposing for inclusion in a master planning study is Area B. That makes up, that's made up of seven parcels. It's two hundred and twenty-six acres, but it's only one point two percent of their tax capacity in Jackson Township. So that's not a significant driver of their financial systems. Sections A, C, and D are each between three point one and three point six percent of their, of their tax capacity. And the big one is E, quadrant E over there is fifteen percent of the tax capacity of the township. So I would expect you might see somewhat different response from them, depending specifically on which areas we might be looking at. And I think we would certainly suggest that especially C and A might come to need to be looked at at some point in the future, but staff was throwing out for the sake of discussion that we start with a look at B. It's adjacent to lands that we already own, it's got that new interchange on one sixty-nine at the top of it, it's a relatively small portion of their tax base to be looking at. It's only seven parcels, so there's a lot of arguments there why we maybe start this conversation and this planning effort incorporating some planning for Section B when it does come into the city. And then if we find that to be a successful partnership, we can move on and look at some of these other parcels, you know, afterwards.
Taking what we learned through the process of B, absolutely apply it to A, C, whatever, D, absolutely.
One of the other benefits of going with a master planning approach, Michael had shown that there was some talk, can you go back to the other map that's on the document camera? You know, he had thrown out that we've been talking to, we've had some inquiries from the people that own this land right here, and when we throw out the notion that we may want some roads through here, if you only are looking at this parcel and only looking to develop this parcel, that's not going to be something you're terribly excited about, because it has significant impacts. But do we want to let this parcel develop without road passage and close off the possibility of, of other places? So again, one of the benefits of looking at this area in total, before we start picking off individual parcels for, you know, standalone or silo-type development.
I kind of want to have an addition to what Ms. Wilson just said. I did have an end user about eight, eight months ago or so, that was looking for a hundred acres, and they were going to build a million-square-foot facility. And that was some concerns that I had, depending on where they put it, they were, we didn't have anything in the city limits that would actually meet that criteria. So they were looking out in the township, and I think those are some concerns that I had, is number one, if they did buy that land and build out there, would that be something that we would want to see out there? How would they get served with water or sewer? And if they went in between, what happens if, as, you know, as Councilmember Lehman had said, what if someone develops and someone doesn't, and then we need to get water or sewer through where they've already built, then we have challenges? So my recommendation to you would be to look at it as a whole and decide what you want there. I know we just met, Mr. Leake had set up a meeting for us with the developer last week, and he'd made some really great recommendations on potentially putting housing in this area, putting commercial in this area, looking at it as developing in the entire area, even though right now we might only be looking at one parcel. When I have businesses asking me, well, what's going to go in my neighborhood, then we can at least give them a general idea. Right now, if we don't plan a larger area, it's very hard to tell them what I see there.
And I might note, over the last eight years, I and others with the city staff have talked to a lot of retail commercial tire kickers for that area, and one of the things that we butt up against is with some of them, there are no houses to the south, there are no houses to the west. And so my experience with retailers is that they like to see where the people are coming from directly, even if that ends up not being their actual market, they want to see those houses there. So if you can get some development going, and if you can show how it should happen to entice development to go there, I talked today to a residential and mixed-use developer who typically only does work in Minneapolis, but they're starting to look outside of Minneapolis. And so I shared the vacant land map specifically noting this area, because that area that, that's about seventy-two acres, might have some potential. One of the things that we know will happen is an extension of County Road sixteen that eventually will find its way down to seventy-eight. And so maybe you don't need that road that we talked about some years ago, and can serve the area on the downside of the bluff from seventy-eight and from the interchange. I mean, those are things that we need to take a look at.
Other questions? Councilor Lehman?
Mr. Thompson, you going to earn your keep tonight? You got any comments?
Thank you, sir.
Well, Ms. May, members of council, I can certainly work with staff if they decide to go through with the moratorium. I do think it's a good idea to talk to the township, to see if they'd be interested. And I also do want to check, I made a note here to check, there is a statute that I'd want to double-check to make sure whether they, city could actually, whether they can or cannot actually extend a moratorium beyond their boundaries. I don't think we can, but I'd want to double-check that. We can't extend zoning ordinances, but I don't know. And I don't think you'd want to do that without talking to them anyway.
No, I don't, I don't like the strong-arm approach. That's just not healthy.
All right, so we have three items that we've kind of discussed concurrently here, so let's just take the first one. Does anyone have an issue with moving forward with, Councilor Lehman and I discussing Jackson Township to initiate discussions the way we've discussed, talked about tonight? Is there any concerns with that from anyone?
You'd have my consent.
All right, we got that. Then B, direct staff to prepare and issue request for proposal, proposal for the development of a master land use concept plan for Western Shakopee adjacent township lands. I think this one, we should probably put in the form of a vote, is that?
Certainly.
So if anybody wants to put that in motion, Councilor Lehman?
Direct staff to prepare and issue a request for proposals for the development of a master land use concept plan for Western Shakopee adjacent township lands. Follow-up question?
Councilor Luce, seconds. Councilor Lehman, discussion.
Mr. Leake, is, is, is this proposal just the land use portion of it, and then once we know what we agree on for the land use portion of it, then will staff at that point figure out the utility type size of it?
We will want this study to take a look not just at land use, but transportation and generally how the areas are going to serve with, be served with utilities. But it's at the cost that I've indicated, the timeframe I've indicated, going to be fairly high level, so there will be additional work that will need to be done after that.
Specific to the uses that we agree?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you need that in the motion?
No.
So, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. And then number five, direct staff to prepare interim ordinance, does anyone want to put a motion on that one? Councilor Whiting?
I'll move to direct staff to prepare interim ordinance for moratorium on development in the areas under study and place it on the agenda for adoption February third, two thousand and fifteen, City Council meeting.
Councilor Mokel?
A second.
Discussion. All right, seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Anything else you'd like to discuss? All right, item twelve, any other business? All right, item thirteen, adjourn, adjourn to February third, two thousand and fourteen at seven P.M. Councilor Whiting?
I'll move to adjourn till February third, two thousand and fourteen at seven P.M.
Councilor Luce, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.